All right, we're last. All right, welcome to our December 10th meeting of the Paulding County School Board. I'd like to call that meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. We are all in attendance. Teresa and John Dean are just down the hall. They'll be back in just a second. We are joined by our board attorney, Mr. Cable, and of course, our superintendent, Steve Barnett. I need to...I need a motion to adopt our proposed agenda for this meeting.
So moved.
And I'm going to say that unanimously, but Teresa and John are not in here. All right, we are now going to adjourn to executive session where no votes will be taken. We will only discuss personnel, land, and legal matters. The no votes will be taken except for to approve our executive session minutes. Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Nolan, second by Mr. Clayton. Is there any discussion on adjourning to executive session? Hearing none. All in favor to adjourn to executive session? All right, we are adjourned. So moved by Mr. Nolan, second by Mr. Clayton. Is there any discussion on adjourning to executive session? Hearing none. All in favor to adjourn to executive session? All right, we are adjourned.
Good evening. Welcome to, we're reconvening our regular session of our December 10th Board meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Robbie Finley from Caleb's Call Ministry to come and lead us in our invocation. Following the invocation, if everybody would please still remain standing, and our North Paulding High School JROTC will lead us in our pledge. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Let's pray. Hey God, it's me again, just coming to you with some other friends. Father, just thanking you for how good you are. And Father, thank you for these leaders up here that get together and they're trying to invest their time, energy, knowledge, and their experience as Father, to help our next generations. So thank you for that, Father. We pray that you'll give them wisdom, insight, discernment on everything that they have to address and handle day in and day out, and then tonight. Father, thank you for the people that's here to maybe present something to them or hear something. Pray God that, you know, as the holidays are coming up, Father, our kids are going to be out of school. We pray God that you'll just give them just a little bit of extra oversight and guidance, God, from yourself and your Spirit, that, God, they'll make good decisions and resist temptations that will come their way. And Father, once again, we just thank you for those that care enough to spend time here tonight, whether it's on that side of that desk or this side of it. And God, we pray that you'll bless it. May we be leaving something that other communities and counties and Board of Educations all over want to be like. We thank you and we praise you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Good evening. Welcome to, we're reconvening our regular session of our December 10th Board meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Robbie Finley from Caleb's Call Ministry to come and lead us in our invocation. Following the invocation, if everybody would please still remain standing, and our North Paulding High School JROTC will lead us in our pledge. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Let's pray. Hey God, it's me again, just coming to you with some other friends. Father, just thanking you for how good you are. And Father, thank you for these leaders up here that get together and they're trying to invest their time, energy, knowledge, and their experience as Father, to help our next generations. So thank you for that, Father. We pray that you'll give them wisdom, insight, discernment on everything that they have to address and handle day in and day out, and then tonight. Father, thank you for the people that's here to maybe present something to them or hear something. Pray God that, you know, as the holidays are coming up, Father, our kids are going to be out of school. We pray God that you'll just give them just a little bit of extra oversight and guidance, God, from yourself and your Spirit, that, God, they'll make good decisions and resist temptations that will come their way. And Father, once again, we just thank you for those that care enough to spend time here tonight, whether it's on that side of that desk or this side of it. And God, we pray that you'll bless it. May we be leaving something that other communities and counties and Board of Educations all over want to be like. We thank you and we praise you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Good evening. Welcome to, we're reconvening our regular session of our December 10th Board meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Robbie Finley from Caleb's Call Ministry to come and lead us in our invocation. Following the invocation, if everybody would please still remain standing, and our North Paulding High School JROTC will lead us in our pledge. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Let's pray. Hey God, it's me again, just coming to you with some other friends. Father, just thanking you for how good you are. And Father, thank you for these leaders up here that get together and they're trying to invest their time, energy, knowledge, and their experience as Father, to help our next generations. So thank you for that, Father. We pray that you'll give them wisdom, insight, discernment on everything that they have to address and handle day in and day out, and then tonight. Father, thank you for the people that's here to maybe present something to them or hear something. Pray God that, you know, as the holidays are coming up, Father, our kids are going to be out of school. We pray God that you'll just give them just a little bit of extra oversight and guidance, God, from yourself and your Spirit, that, God, they'll make good decisions and resist temptations that will come their way. And Father, once again, we just thank you for those that care enough to spend time here tonight, whether it's on that side of that desk or this side of it. And God, we pray that you'll bless it. May we be leaving something that other communities and counties and Board of Educations all over want to be like. We thank you and we praise you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Good evening. Welcome to, we're reconvening our regular session of our December 10th Board meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Robbie Finley from Caleb's Call Ministry to come and lead us in our invocation. Following the invocation, if everybody would please still remain standing, and our North Paulding High School JROTC will lead us in our pledge. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Let's pray. Hey God, it's me again, just coming to you with some other friends. Father, just thanking you for how good you are. And Father, thank you for these leaders up here that get together and they're trying to invest their time, energy, knowledge, and their experience as Father, to help our next generations. So thank you for that, Father. We pray that you'll give them wisdom, insight, discernment on everything that they have to address and handle day in and day out, and then tonight. Father, thank you for the people that's here to maybe present something to them or hear something. Pray God that, you know, as the holidays are coming up, Father, our kids are going to be out of school. We pray God that you'll just give them just a little bit of extra oversight and guidance, God, from yourself and your Spirit, that, God, they'll make good decisions and resist temptations that will come their way. And Father, once again, we just thank you for those that care enough to spend time here tonight, whether it's on that side of that desk or this side of it. And God, we pray that you'll bless it. May we be leaving something that other communities and counties and Board of Educations all over want to be like. We thank you and we praise you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Good evening. Welcome to, we're reconvening our regular session of our December 10th Board meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Robbie Finley from Caleb's Call Ministry to come and lead us in our invocation. Following the invocation, if everybody would please still remain standing, and our North Paulding High School JROTC will lead us in our pledge. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Let's pray. Hey God, it's me again, just coming to you with some other friends. Father, just thanking you for how good you are. And Father, thank you for these leaders up here that get together and they're trying to invest their time, energy, knowledge, and their experience as Father, to help our next generations. So thank you for that, Father. We pray that you'll give them wisdom, insight, discernment on everything that they have to address and handle day in and day out, and then tonight. Father, thank you for the people that's here to maybe present something to them or hear something. Pray God that, you know, as the holidays are coming up, Father, our kids are going to be out of school. We pray God that you'll just give them just a little bit of extra oversight and guidance, God, from yourself and your Spirit, that, God, they'll make good decisions and resist temptations that will come their way. And Father, once again, we just thank you for those that care enough to spend time here tonight, whether it's on that side of that desk or this side of it. And God, we pray that you'll bless it. May we be leaving something that other communities and counties and Board of Educations all over want to be like. We thank you and we praise you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Good evening. Welcome to, we're reconvening our regular session of our December 10th Board meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Robbie Finley from Caleb's Call Ministry to come and lead us in our invocation. Following the invocation, if everybody would please still remain standing, and our North Paulding High School JROTC will lead us in our pledge. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Let's pray. Hey God, it's me again, just coming to you with some other friends. Father, just thanking you for how good you are. And Father, thank you for these leaders up here that get together and they're trying to invest their time, energy, knowledge, and their experience as Father, to help our next generations. So thank you for that, Father. We pray that you'll give them wisdom, insight, discernment on everything that they have to address and handle day in and day out, and then tonight. Father, thank you for the people that's here to maybe present something to them or hear something. Pray God that, you know, as the holidays are coming up, Father, our kids are going to be out of school. We pray God that you'll just give them just a little bit of extra oversight and guidance, God, from yourself and your Spirit, that, God, they'll make good decisions and resist temptations that will come their way. And Father, once again, we just thank you for those that care enough to spend time here tonight, whether it's on that side of that desk or this side of it. And God, we pray that you'll bless it. May we be leaving something that other communities and counties and Board of Educations all over want to be like. We thank you and we praise you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Good evening. Welcome to, we're reconvening our regular session of our December 10th Board meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Robbie Finley from Caleb's Call Ministry to come and lead us in our invocation. Following the invocation, if everybody would please still remain standing, and our North Paulding High School JROTC will lead us in our pledge. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Let's pray. Hey God, it's me again, just coming to you with some other friends. Father, just thanking you for how good you are. And Father, thank you for these leaders up here that get together and they're trying to invest their time, energy, knowledge, and their experience as Father, to help our next generations. So thank you for that, Father. We pray that you'll give them wisdom, insight, discernment on everything that they have to address and handle day in and day out, and then tonight. Father, thank you for the people that's here to maybe present something to them or hear something. Pray God that, you know, as the holidays are coming up, Father, our kids are going to be out of school. We pray God that you'll just give them just a little bit of extra oversight and guidance, God, from yourself and your Spirit, that, God, they'll make good decisions and resist temptations that will come their way. And Father, once again, we just thank you for those that care enough to spend time here tonight, whether it's on that side of that desk or this side of it. And God, we pray that you'll bless it. May we be leaving something that other communities and counties and Board of Educations all over want to be like. We thank you and we praise you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Good evening. Welcome to, we're reconvening our regular session of our December 10th Board meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Robbie Finley from Caleb's Call Ministry to come and lead us in our invocation. Following the invocation, if everybody would please still remain standing, and our North Paulding High School JROTC will lead us in our pledge. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Let's pray. Hey God, it's me again, just coming to you with some other friends. Father, just thanking you for how good you are. And Father, thank you for these leaders up here that get together and they're trying to invest their time, energy, knowledge, and their experience as Father, to help our next generations. So thank you for that, Father. We pray that you'll give them wisdom, insight, discernment on everything that they have to address and handle day in and day out, and then tonight. Father, thank you for the people that's here to maybe present something to them or hear something. Pray God that, you know, as the holidays are coming up, Father, our kids are going to be out of school. We pray God that you'll just give them just a little bit of extra oversight and guidance, God, from yourself and your Spirit, that, God, they'll make good decisions and resist temptations that will come their way. And Father, once again, we just thank you for those that care enough to spend time here tonight, whether it's on that side of that desk or this side of it. And God, we pray that you'll bless it. May we be leaving something that other communities and counties and Board of Educations all over want to be like. We thank you and we praise you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Good evening. Welcome to, we're reconvening our regular session of our December 10th Board meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Robbie Finley from Caleb's Call Ministry to come and lead us in our invocation. Following the invocation, if everybody would please still remain standing, and our North Paulding High School JROTC will lead us in our pledge. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Let's pray. Hey God, it's me again, just coming to you with some other friends. Father, just thanking you for how good you are. And Father, thank you for these leaders up here that get together and they're trying to invest their time, energy, knowledge, and their experience as Father, to help our next generations. So thank you for that, Father. We pray that you'll give them wisdom, insight, discernment on everything that they have to address and handle day in and day out, and then tonight. Father, thank you for the people that's here to maybe present something to them or hear something. Pray God that, you know, as the holidays are coming up, Father, our kids are going to be out of school. We pray God that you'll just give them just a little bit of extra oversight and guidance, God, from yourself and your Spirit, that, God, they'll make good decisions and resist temptations that will come their way. And Father, once again, we just thank you for those that care enough to spend time here tonight, whether it's on that side of that desk or this side of it. And God, we pray that you'll bless it. May we be leaving something that other communities and counties and Board of Educations all over want to be like. We thank you and we praise you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Good evening. Welcome to, we're reconvening our regular session of our December 10th Board meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Robbie Finley from Caleb's Call Ministry to come and lead us in our invocation. Following the invocation, if everybody would please still remain standing, and our North Paulding High School JROTC will lead us in our pledge. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Let's pray.
We're going to get Lieutenant Colonel Lesneski. Are you there? Could you come and intro- bring them and introduce us, please?
You have to sit down. Lieutenant Colonel Lesneski, this is your office sergeant from North Paulding High School. So our wolfhound Italian four yard commander tonight is Cadet Second Lieutenant Joseph Kings, who is a junior. State color bearer is Sergeant Hill, who is a sophomore. Raffle bearer is Sergeant Gates, who is a sophomore. And the other raffle bearer was fifth, First Lieutenant Drard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
Thanks, Captain.
All right. Our first order of business this evening is I need a motion to approve our regular session minutes from our November 19th, 2024 meeting.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. Nolan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? And it is unanimous. All right. We are now, I would like to turn the meeting over to our superintendent for our superintendent's report.
Well, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are going to get to start off with recognizing our REACH Scholars this evening. And so I know they've already had their signing, official signing back there earlier. And so, but we wanted to take the chance for the board to be able to kind of interact with you guys. And so, of course, REACH Georgia helps academically promising students get the support they need to graduate from high school and excel at a post-secondary institution. And so I know tonight we've got Dr. Alan Dawes. He's our director of adverti- advertising, advising. Do you do that? He does advertising, advising, and counseling. So he's going to share probably a little bit more on the program and our class of 29. They're here this evening. I know Paulding, none of this happens without the Paulding Education Foundation. And I know, I saw Jim McMitchen here, as well as Jim Ashworth. Our board chairperson is somewhere in the room. So they're here, and like I said, none of this happens without those guys and without the foundation and without our employees who helped sponsor this. But yes, Mr. Dawes, advertiser extraordinaire.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barnett. I really appreciate it. Board members, thank you for this time to speak with you guys today. Before I get started, I do want to ask Mr. Ashworth to come up here and say a few words. Our partnership with the Paulding Education Foundation is crucial to this scholarship. So I just wanted to invite him up here to speak on behalf of them. So come on up.
Can just take a minute here to thank you all for allowing the foundation to present our REACH students tonight and our school grants as well. And Jim McMickin will be doing that later. But there again, I want to thank you for supporting the foundation, all shall do for the foundation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like it. Okay. So I'm very pleased tonight to introduce you to our class of 2029 REACH Scholars. So the REACH Scholarship, as Mr. Barnett said, is a needs-based mentorship and college scholarship program. So it's very unique in that it's a combination of a college scholarship and a mentorship program. So they will be assigned a mentor and an academic advisor throughout their high school career. So these are people that they're going to have to meet with really about eight times a year at minimum to kind of walk them through their entire four years of high school. So REACH was launched in 2012, and really, it is mostly funded by two parties. One is the Georgia Student Finance Committee, so they oversee the HOPE Scholarship. So this is an extension of that financial commitment. And then obviously, our local sponsor, which is Paulding Education Foundation. Altogether, it's a $10,000 scholarship for each one of these students. So it is a big, big deal. So also, this doesn't have a lot of the strings that are attached with HOPE. You know, HOPE scholarships can only be used really towards that, you know, once they get in there to actually go to college, they can't, they can't go, it can't go towards books or, you know, staying in a housing, student housing, food, any of that stuff. So this will actually go towards any of those other areas as well if they get other scholarships. So this selection process was pretty lengthy. We have, as Mr. Freeman said earlier tonight, we have over 7,300 middle school students. So we had a lot of applicants for this because it's such a large amount of money. And they eventually had to dwindle down.
Permission granted.
Thank you, ma'am. Order. Arms. Pose. Present. Arms. Order. Arms. Okay. Base. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Left. Base. Forward. Mikes.
We're going to get Lieutenant Colonel Lesneski. You there? Could you come and bring them and introduce us, please?
You have to sit down. Detective Division Major Lesneski, this is your office sergeant from Normal Ole Miss High School. So our full-time commandant tonight is Cadet Second Lieutenant Joseph Kings, who is a junior. State color bearer is Sergeant Hill, who is a sophomore. Raffle bearer is Sergeant Gates, who is a sophomore. And the other raffle bearer was Fifth Lieutenant Drard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, so much. All right, our first order of business this evening is I need a motion to approve our regular session minutes from our November 19th, 2024 meeting.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. Nolan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. And it is unanimous. All right, we are now, I would like to turn the meeting over to our superintendent for our superintendent's report.
Well, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are going to get to start off with recognizing our REACH Scholars this evening. And so I know they've already had their signing, official signing back there earlier. And so, but we wanted to take the chance for the board to be able to kind of interact with you guys. And so, of course, REACH Georgia helps academically promising students get the support they need to graduate from high school and excel at a post-secondary institution. And so I know tonight we've got Dr. Alan Dawes. He's our Director of Advertising, advising. Do you do that? He does advertising, advising, and counseling. So he's going to share probably a little bit more on the program and our class of 29. They're here this evening. I know Paulding, none of this happens without the Paulding Education Foundation. And I know, I saw Jim McMitchen here, as well as Jim Ashworth. Our Board Chairperson is somewhere in the room, so they're here. And like I said, none of this happens without those guys and without the foundation and without our employees who helped sponsor this, so. But yes, Mr. Dawes, advertiser extraordinaire.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barnett. I really appreciate it. Board members, thank you for this time to speak with you guys today. Before I get started, I do want to ask Mr. Ashworth to come up here and say a few words. Our partnership with the Paulding Education Foundation is crucial to this scholarship. So I just wanted to invite him up here to speak on behalf of them, so come on up.
Can just take a minute here to thank you all for allowing the foundation to present our REACH students tonight and our school grants as well. And Jim McMitchen will be doing that later. But there again, I want to thank you for supporting the foundation, all shall do for the foundation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like it, okay. So I'm very pleased tonight to introduce you to our class of 2029 REACH Scholars. So the REACH Scholarship, as Mr. Barnett said, is a needs-based mentorship and college scholarship program. So it's very unique in that it's a combination of a college scholarship and a mentorship program. So they will be assigned a mentor and an academic advisor throughout their high school career. So these are people that they're going to have to meet with, really about eight times a year at minimum to kind of walk them through their entire four years of high school. So REACH was launched in 2012, and really, it is mostly funded by two parties. One is the Georgia Student Finance Committee, so they oversee the HOPE Scholarship. So this is an extension of that financial commitment. And then, obviously, our local sponsor, which is Paulding Education Foundation. Altogether, it's a $10,000 scholarship for each one of these students. So it is a big, big deal. So also, this doesn't have a lot of the strings that are attached with HOPE. You know, HOPE scholarships can only be used really towards that, you know, once they get in there to actually go to college, they can't go towards books or, you know, staying in a housing, student housing, food, any of that stuff. So this will actually go towards any of those other areas as well if they get other scholarships. So this selection process was pretty lengthy. We have, as Mr. Freeman said earlier tonight, we have over 7,300 middle school students. So we had a lot of applicants for this because it's such a large amount of money. And they eventually had to dwindle down to an interview, which is a big deal for an eighth grader. This, in many cases, this was their first real, almost job interview. And that was a tough task, but our four winners did exceedingly, exceedingly well. So this was chosen based off academics, attendance, student behavior, and then financial commitments. So we really, really appreciate the job that these four did. So I'd like to introduce you to them. One at a time, I'll ask you guys to stand as I introduce you. I know you're kind of behind me, so you may want to come over here. That would be great, okay? So I've got Samantha O'Jean from Rich Middle School. I've got Eva Moore from McClure Middle School. Jayla Simon from Jones Middle School. And Ms. Sarah Lee from Austin Middle School. So those are our four REACH Scholars. We are really looking forward to see where they go from here, and we'll be there to support them along the way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I told you, I'll be getting a picture.
Right here, we can fill in between points, that's going to be great. Get students in front. Okay, let's see. Board members in the back, if you could scoot down to your right just a little bit, there we go. You can see, everybody, Mr. Clayton to your right just a little bit, Mr. Fuller to your right just a little bit. Okay, I think we got it all. Mr. Chester to your left just a little bit. Big smiles, everybody. Got it, thank you.
Congratulations, I'm proud of you. Family, I think you guys are free to go, so. Unless you want to hear about more school business, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Well, we should have just made this a Partners in Education night and focused everything on the foundation. So Jim McMitchen is going to come up. As Jim Ashworth noted, we want to thank the foundation and, of course, the support of our staff through the Give Me Five program. These guys funded seven grants, and I want to steal your thunder, Mr. McMitchen, please share with us the results.
I will. Thank you, Superintendent Barnett. Board, good to see you again. I appreciate, I love being in here and this opportunity. As you can tell, we've had a lot of exciting things going on this year, even in the transition that we're going through. But I wanted to share with you a couple of things. We know that we are a district without the multitude of large businesses to support the budget sometimes that we need. And we know it's easy for our teachers and our school administrators to say, you know, let's just focus on what we have and not dream big, but do what we can with what we got. And sometimes we feel like that might lower the bar of what could be done in our schools. And so we look this as an opportunity to partner with you and the school district, but specifically with those teachers and those local administrators to come aside and say, no, keep dreaming big. Keep thinking big. Keep coming with programs that make sense with cutting-edge and data-proven technologies that make sense for the depth of knowledge that we want our students to walk away with. As we talk about that, I'm actually reminded about a story of Robert Louis Stevenson, who's the author of Treasure Island and wrote several many others as well. But he was a young boy growing up 19th century, and he was in Edinburgh, Scotland. And at that time, they didn't have streetlights. They would have lamplighters that would come and stick the poles way up high to light the lights at night. And his parents often found him at the window watching in amazement as they would come and light those lights. And his parents asked him one night, what are you doing? And he said, I'm watching them punch holes in the darkness. And to me, that's kind of the motivating factor for us. We get to partner with these schools to punch holes in what sometimes we put a cap on ourselves. And we love that idea of saying, no, here's a little bit of more light that we can shine. This year, we had, again, seven schools that were awarded the scholarships, grants, if you will. I'm going to tell you a little bit about each one of them real quickly. Russum Elementary and their project as Rhino Breakfast Club, again, using some technology to drive that one. We have Pool Elementary doing a read-and-ride program, fostering love for literacy and fitness in the library. We have New Georgia Elementary, project is Kid Farmers, learning how to take what resources we have and watch it go through the life cycle and be able to feed and be able to see that in the schools as food is produced there. We have Dallas Elementary as well, Dallas Discovery Den, where they're using some of the physical activity, exploration of inclusion and literacy there as well. We have Dobbins Middle School, movement up the STEM curriculum, if you will. And so they're moving towards more of a STEM certification. Austin Middle, the Roots Robots that they're producing now and how to use that in the classroom with more students. We also have South Paulding High School, which I was excited to hear about as well, as they're doing innovations for Cultivating Dreams For Tomorrow, using the pods, windmill, life cycle of that to produce gardens, and see their AIM Academy continue to be involved in that. If you remember, back in 2009 is the first time we actually started doing these grants, and they were 500 and moved up to $1,000 grants. It's because of our teachers and because of our staff in all different kind of ways that we see that grow every year. And so again, that money has grown this year, and to be able to do not just one elementary, if you remember, we have 19 elementaries, and it's tough for them to compete for one grant. So we divided that five, and we give so many in each one. So we're excited about it, but we're more excited about the schools' ideas that let's not just stop at what our current budget is. Let's not put a cap on ourselves and the depth of knowledge we can drive, but let's partner with some things that can drive it forward. So Board, Superintendent, thank you for the opportunity. We're excited about it.
Thank you. Yeah, again, thank you to the Paulding Education Foundation for all they do to support the school district and board. Members, if you're interested, here's a little write-up on all of those different projects, a little more information. I'll leave it up here if you're interested in learning more about any one of those seven projects here. So again, thank you, Jim. Jim, thank you, guys, for being here and for all you do. I'm going to ask Ms. Anna Durham to come up, our Chief Financial Officer. Business Services has published their monthly financial update for October, and she's going to come highlight some key points in the update, and thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you very much. Tonight, I'd like to go over just a few highlights from our October financial update. With just 33.3% of the fiscal year 25 budget year elapsed, you'll see in that top graph the percentage variance of year-to-date revenue to budget. And with, currently, we're at the negative 10.3% compared to prior year of 4.8% and a three-year average of 4.5%. We're showing less revenue at this time due to the property taxes not being due until December 4th this year. And then, in the lower graph, you'll see the percentage variance of year-to-date expenditures to budget was 0.8% compared to 1.1% in fiscal year '24 and a three-year average of 1.8%. And then our unassumed fund balance could support 0.4 months of the fiscal year 25 budgeted expenditures compared to 2.1 months last year, which is related to receiving that property tax revenue later. And then, as a reminder, this financial update is attached to today's meeting agenda and available on our website. And then we also include a monthly statement of revenues, expenditures, and encumbrances. And then our next full quarterly report will be presented in February for the second quarter of fiscal year '25.
Great, well, thank you, Ms. Durham. So two weeks of fund balance we have. So moving on from that, I am going to ask Ms. Tiffany Frazier, our Chief Academic Officer, to come up. She's going to share a little bit of the good news related to our 2024 CCRPI scores and our results from that. So thank you for being here.
Yeah, glad to, always glad to brag about our schools. You may have seen the press release yesterday, but I just wanted to pull out some highlights around CCRPI, specifically around the components. So middle school and elementary school has four components, which is content mastery, progress, closing gaps, readiness. And then high school has the fifth component, which is graduation rate. So I'm just going to kind of talk through each of those components and what are the highlights for the district with that. So with content mastery, it really looks at students' performance in their core subjects. We saw, really saw a good growth in middle school across the board. They rose by 3.1 points for content mastery. And part of that was a 6.5 increase in math from '23 to '24. High school also increased in math by 5.91 points. Elementary, they're showing steady improvement as well. They had a 2.39 increase in English Language Arts. So excited to see that progress in content mastery. Looking at progress, this is really where we made a lot of traction this year. Progress is, measures students' academic growth over time. So it looks at how they performed last year and compares their progress this year to their similar peers across the state. Our high schools had a remarkable increase this year in progress. They had a 12.2 increase, due in part to double-digit progress in algebra. You remember, that's been a strategic goal for us. That has been, we've purchased new curriculum, and we've provided additional allotments for the year-long algebra model and had some math coaching during the ESSA, with the ESSA fundings. And so that was exciting to see that. Their high school progress was three times the growth of the state progress. They only moved forward by 3.5 points. Middle school also had substantial gains in progress. They increased by 3.4 points, again, more than double what the state increased. And they had more of a spread-out increase, so they had increases across ELA math and English language proficiency. And elementary school, again, demonstrated a big growth in English Language Arts. We've been focusing a lot on literacy. They had a 4.76 increase, and they maintained a 100-plus score for English Language learner progress. And that is on the access test as they move, as English Language learners become more proficient with the English language. So elementary schools had 100 points for that. Readiness is really made up of three components. It's literacy, attendance, and beyond the core. And the thing that we have the most control over in the classroom is literacy, obviously. As I reported to you for Quarter One, the Paulding County Median Lexile Score is within grade level expectations for every tested grade level. And our high school students in American Lit are reading at the level necessary. The average high school student is reading at the level necessary for success in their early years of college and career. So the target Lexile Score that we want them to have in high school is leaving high school for first year of college or first year of career is 1,300, and our median Lexile is 1,305 for our high school students. Graduation rate, we talked already about graduation rate, but one thing I wanted to be sure I said again, seeing it from the rafters, our mission statement is success for all kids. And we saw a 5.5% increase in students with disabilities graduating on time and a 14-point increase in our English Language learners graduating on time. So really excited to see, again, that's been one of our strategic focuses. We want every kid to have the ability to reach their full potential and crank through to their future at the same pace. So while, even though we're looking at the scores packaged in a different package, which is CCRPI, this is the data that we used back in May and June that the schools used to build their school improvement plans. So this is the milestone data. They just sliced it and diced it differently for CCRPI. But we've been building on the strengths and even, you know, the weaknesses in this data since we started, since we received the milestone scores in May and June. And then, as I spoke to you about for the Quarter One report, we've been using our formative data as well to make sure that we're addressing the needs of the kids that are currently in the classroom, because some of these friends left us in May and matriculated to new opportunities, so thank you. We're excited.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. As I said in the press release, the scores really just highlight what we know to be happening in our classrooms. And so I just want to say, you know, thank you to our teachers, administrators, all those who support the work that we do at the schools. And we are certainly moving in the right direction, so to thank you, everyone, thank you. Again, we don't wait for these scores to come out. It's much more intentional and proactive than that. So, but thank you, Ms. Frazier, for that. I appreciate it. It's just, yep, sure does. Sorry, just wanted to also say thank you to everyone who came out to the Dallas Christmas Parade. I'm not sure the last time, if ever, we've had all five high school bands perform at the parade. I know they typically are pulled in different directions, and so we had all five of the bands there. We had numerous student groups for all different sorts of things, choruses and all. We even had board members, as you see there on the screen. A couple, we let drive cars. I don't know what we were thinking there, but. Yeah, I know, now I've outed us, yeah. Rates are going up.
Mike really said, check and make sure everybody's license is valid, right?
And no disrespect to our board members, but I think the highlight of the day was probably Radar.
And Queenie.
And Queenie, yeah.
So the Teacher of the Year was in the back of the car, and the kids loved the dog way more than anybody. So Radar and Queenie were the hit. And Safety Pup, yeah. Everybody wanted their picture with Safety Pup.
So next year, we're committed to bring more canines to the parade. We're going to do that, and more candy, by the way. Yeah, we're going to do that, too. But anyway, thank you, guys, for participating in that. It was a great day. And then I did want to just mention, congratulations to our Paulding County High School varsity flag football team. The Lady Patriots made it all the way to the Elite Eight this week in the state playoffs. And they came super close last night to defeating Denmark, and they came up just a little bit short. So just want to say congratulations to them on an outstanding, outstanding year. And we continue our search for our second team sport state champion. So they took us a long way, so we appreciate them. And then just wanted to mention there on the screen, wanted to say, of course, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Friday, December 20th will be an early release day for us. The holiday break begins that Monday, December 23rd. This is going to be a sad day, but we have a teacher work day on Friday, January 3rd. That's when they come back. And then, of course, our second semester starts Monday, January 6th. I also want to just note that our swearing-in ceremony for Mr. Clayton, Mr. Fuller, Ms. Lyons, Ms. Collette, all four will be December the 18th at 10:00 a.m. at the probate courtroom of the Watson Government Complex. So we'll be there with our photographer, Jay there will be there to take some pictures. And so we'll be there to celebrate with you guys. And then our next meeting will be on January 14th, 2025, for our board work session that starts at 8:30 a.m. And that's all I have for the superintendent report. But with your permission, Madam Chair, we'll move into the business items this evening. So our first item is the quarterly report for technology. We've got two quarterly reports this evening, technology and then school leadership. And again, these guys are just here to share some highlights from the report, and I don't want to, again, steal their thunder. Julia Raxdale, our Chief Information Officer, will share more. But the quarterly report's available for your review. And then also, we have our breakout sessions on the 14th for these two divisions, and you can swing by at 4:45 and ask anything you want. But Ms. Raxdale, thank you for being here.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Madam Board Chair, members of the Board, and Mr. Superintendent. I am pleased to present the Technology Division's quarterly report. And as Mr. Barnett mentioned, I do have that quarterly report to go along with this on our website. So it gives more description into our, just details. So, it gives more description into our, just details of what each department does and some, some pre-grabs for you to look at that basically shares and highlights some of our work. But today, I'm going to highlight our organization, the tech, the technology initiatives comprised in our strategic plan, and our current technology projects and our funding. This organizational chart depicts our four departments, Support and Services, Enterprise Systems, Network Operations, and Instructional Technology. Our team takes our district's theme to heart in modeling our mission, and we lead by example. We have very high expectations placed upon us, and then we place high expectations on ourselves. We prioritize staff development, and with that, we serve multiple roles. And so, we, we basically, in order to meet our deliverables with our limited resources, we have to have many roles, and we have to deliver with excellence. So, we focus on leadership, we focus on results, and we serve with professionalism and respect. So, our two initiatives, or our, I'm sorry, five initiatives are included in two of our goal areas for organizational excellence and also innovation. The organizational initiatives, as far as operational and organizational excellence, we basically do this work continuously, but we've highlighted it in the strategic plan to include technology refresh upgrades, our updates in our maintenance cycles for our equipment and our solutions. And as of the beginning of this current strategic plan in 2022, we added, as you approved, with that plan, the Student Laptop Initiative, and also, we are expanding our instructional technology, our instructional capacity to incorporate STEM within our instruction. So, with that work, we partner and collaborate with teaching and learning. Our Instructional Technology Department works with our certified staff and teachers to integrate technology into instruction, and with that, I always must recognize the exceptional work of our STEM Coordinator, Ms. Sarah Graham. And so, while all of our departments have a role in the work we do, two departments I'll highlight with these initiatives, and that's Instructional Technology and Support and Services. The Student Laptop Program has been just a huge change to our landscape as far as our day-to-day work, with all of the additional devices that we now support. We are in year three of the program. As you approved that two years ago, we have now completed the middle and high school rollouts for the Take Home Program, and we are completing elementary schools this year. So, with that, obviously, that, that's a greater workload as far as devices to support, but also how to utilize those devices in the classrooms. And that's where instructional technology works hard to make sure that they're utilized effectively with the instruction. They provide training, and they also provide coaching for our teachers. They serve as mentors, they offer work sessions, and they also co-teach. So, they do that to incorporate STEM resources and items into the classroom. With our Support Services, we have about 46,000 devices, computing devices that we're serving on a daily basis, and that doesn't count, of course, all the other standard classroom equipment that we have, and office equipment and applications. We have 19 school support technologists serving the 40 sites, and we also have, with this program, we've, we've allocated two, two dedicated laptop technologists that are basically just running a laptop depot, if you will, as far as the support. To help alleviate some of the volume, we, we've partnered with our Work-Based Learning Program. We've done this for a couple of years now. So, we utilize high school students in, in our high schools to actually serve a lot of the support for the, for the devices. We have those in four of our five, but we try to have at least one in each high school, and that helps us out a great bill, a great deal because of the limited staff. With our Instructional Technology Coaches, we have seven serving the 35 schools, and they do provide, like I mentioned, and it's depicted on the screen, training sessions. So, we have two per semester this year, and we try to align those training sessions with what may be a new application rolled out for the year, district-wide, or just our standard enterprise applications and solutions that need additional training. So, this year, we're focusing on basically classroom management in a one-to-one scenario because it's, it's a different way you teach when you have the devices in the room. We also have a new assessment platform within our learning management system, so we have classes devoted to it, as well as just the Microsoft tools that we use with our Microsoft 365 platform. In addition to those, I mentioned the coaching they do. We, our goal really is to have the coaches in the schools at least weekly. With our model now, we cannot quite reach that, but we have had a lot of requests from schools to have more coaching. So, you know, if we, if we increased our coaches by one, we would have kind of a four-to-one ratio, and that's what we're really looking for, so they can be in the, in the schools on a weekly basis. We do find, in analyzing the data from having, having more instructional support, it, the higher participation of our, of our schools with both the in-person training classes and those kind of will-call classes, they need small group sessions or additional training or one-to-one training, that we find that the more that the schools participate in that training, the lower the support tickets for instruct, instructional applications, and that makes sense. So, that's been working out really well. For this year, it's kind of a little competitive thing. We've been tracking the leaderboard for the highest participation with the training with the schools. And Mr. Craig Ellison, he's here with us this evening. He's our, he'll stand our Executive Director of Technology. He developed this department two years ago in his former role as Director, and his vision has just been a tremendous success. And so, like I mentioned, our data is really showing progress with our, with our teachers understanding our tools and applications. And, and he can hold up the sign maybe, so, or the plaque. This is going to be one of the, the awards for the training, and basically, if you'll recognize the little floppy drive, the current Director of Instructional Technology is Dr. Jim Long, and he's going to present that award at the end of the semesters as far as the, the highest leader of training in each of the, the three grade levels. So, thank you. In our other goal area with operational and organizational excellence, our other departments, Enterprise Systems, which is led by Ms. Kelly Couch, Network Operations, led by Mr. Clay Burnup, and Support and Services, who, after your vote this evening, should have a new leader. They, they work daily on basically keeping our solu, uh, solutions and our equipment updated. We have refreshed schedules based upon the type of equipment, and then we have everything on an update or an upgrade schedule to make sure that everything is running at a level of acceptance for security and performance. And while these initiatives, like I mentioned, are in the strategic plan, this is something that we would have been doing anyway, and we have been doing for the past 10 years. A primary focus in our, serving our schools, and particularly the last two years, has been with cybersecurity and the safety for our students and staff. Our divisional goals, we actually have metrics where we monitor, enhance our, to enhance our cybersecurity posture, and we do adopt critical solutions and practices and proactive measures to secure our network and our data. And I do thank you for supporting us this year and onboarding a dedicated cybersecurity engineer. That has been just a tremendous benefit for us, and that work is just crucial in, in making sure that we're adhering to all of the, the cybersecurity proactive measures that we need today. At any given time, our division has a list of active projects, as you see on the screen, and these may be directly tied to our strategic plan or just in support of our district's operations and our improvements. So, from this project list, as you can see, we may be doing massive district-wide deployments, but we also are doing leader development, we're doing committee work, and we're involved in construction projects. And while our work is, is far-reaching within the organization, we do have limited resources and funding for our technology initiatives and staff. I, I placed a chart here that kind of gives you an idea of our funding sources within our division. So, primarily, our, our initiatives are funded with operational funds, and if you compare us to other school districts, most of that type of work, your refresh of your hardware and your equipment, would be actually ESPOST funds. And so, where others may be using operational funds for, you know, personnel, we're actually using operational funds for our projects and our, basically, most of our technology. We do maximize grants wherever we can to help supplement that. Annually, we apply for E-Rate funding with the Federal Communications Commission, and that is based on our, the funding is based upon our level of free and reduced lunch. So, that funds annually our access to internet or broadband and also our wide-area network. They offer Category 2 funding, which funds network equipment and the maintenance and licensing for that. That is not necessarily every year. You have a five-year budget, and when it runs out, you wait for the next five-year increment. And so, with that, I do want to mention, we, for this year, we, our applications totaled $2 million, was what we ended up receiving as the funded portion from E-Rate, and that, that goes a long way to help us actually keep our network up and running and have a secure, robust network. When I arrived here, joined the district 10 years ago, we were using a consultant for that, that service. It's managing the program for E-Rate and making those applications, and the consultants typically charge, and they were 10% of what you get. So, we are saving the district that, that money, so $200,000 this year. So, over time, that does add up. And then, also, we collaborated, partnered with Safety and Security in writing security grants. So, I must thank Ms. Tessa Cotton, our Emergency Management Coordinator. She, she was very crucial in seeking out federal and also a state grant to help fund the door access control system. So, so with that, we received $750,000, so that, that helps offset some of the SPOST funding for that. And then, we'll be, of course, utilizing ESPOST 6 and 7 for the safety initiatives as well, video surveillance and door access control. Okay, and as of recent weeks, that project for door access control, that has shifted ownership to the Technology Division, but I must say that this, this is a huge undertaking, and we will have great collaboration with both our Safety and Security Department and our Maintenance Department, because it, it really touches all departments. I know I've mentioned collaboration a couple of times in this meeting today, and that's what I, I feel like is very different and, and something that sets us apart as a school district is because our divisions and our leadership team, we understand that we must work together to, to serve the district to a certain level that is needed without all of the resources. So, we, we work together, and that, I believe, we embrace teamwork, and that, that leads to the success of our initiatives. Okay, and from our team, we want to thank the board for your continued commitment, for allowing us to support our students, to engage, inspire, and prepare.
So, I thought I was comparing your math on E-Rate. This year, it's 80% as opposed to 60%, and they do that all the process. They, I mean, any things that you, as you mentioned. A lot of expenses we carry in the general fund, because, again, we collect 51 or 41 cents to every dollar of our surrounding school districts in ESPOST. So, we don't have the luxury of, of spending that, that money through ESPOST, so we have to look elsewhere, and we have to look to the general fund, and they have to get creative. It'd be a lot easier on these guys to use a consultant for that. They just absorb the work. They just do what it takes to get it done, and they know that the district will be better off for it. So, I just want to say kudos to you and your team for doing that. These reports, what I've asked them to do is just highlight what's interesting or noteworthy to you, because it's going to be interesting to them, and I think it'll be interesting to the board and to the community. So, just highlight kind of what's important to you. It's a 15-page report, and again, you guys can, can read through it and join us on the 14th to talk through it. I did notice, I hope I don't get this wrong, but am I correct when I read the report, that in a week, our advanced, uh, uh, Threat Protection System scans 100 million files in a week? Did I remember that?
That's correct.
100 million in one week, so, and I won't say how, I remember, I won't say how many they actually, how many of those files are, are malicious, but.
Much less than 100 million.
But it is, it's a great document, so thank you for, for putting that together. My only recommendation is you might want to add floppy drive to your glossary in the back, because I have a feeling there's some people in the room don't even know what that is, but.
That's true, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raxdale, appreciate it.
That's how you play Oregon Trail back in kindergarten.
Oregon Trail, that's right.
I mean, I want to review that.
It's a, next up is Jason Freeman, our Chief School Leadership Officer. He's going to share some, some updates from their quarterly report.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett, and good evening, board members. I certainly appreciate the opportunity tonight to highlight some items from our School Leadership Quarter One Report. My point, man.
Just one minute.
School Leadership Division consists of five departments that are supervised by six executive directors, and actually, some of those team members are here tonight. I don't want to ask you guys to stand, whether you're, this is kind of a team here of school leadership. So, yeah, all of you, everybody, school leadership-wise. So, they, they certainly did not have to be here, and I appreciate not just their support tonight, but all the support on a, a daily basis, because there's a lot, obviously, a lot of activity through school leadership every day. Those five departments are listed on this slide, along with some of the data and the key performance indicators that we track for each department. There are additional metrics and tons more information for each department documented in the overall quarterly report. So, we'll jump in, School Operations to start with, and, and talk a little bit about discipline. We track our discipline data at each level in a variety of ways. This, this chart on the screen shows the percentage of students at each level that have served in-school isolation, which is elementary, in-school suspension, and out-of-school suspension for quarter one of this school year. So, you can see that that's a very low percentage of students, and the vast majority of our students at all three levels did not receive either one of those, ISI, ISS, or OSS, as a consequence during the first quarter. And the majority of our students do exactly what we ask them to do every day and meet behavior expectations, and of course, we have a plethora of supports in place to help mitigate student behavior that does not meet school expectations, and it includes our Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, or PIBUS, classroom management training for our teachers, including capturing kids' hearts, our multi-tiered system of supports, and then, of course, counselors and social workers, safety advisors, and then our school-based therapists as well. So, if you look at this graph now, I think it's important because it shows how the percentages drop when we remove students who had just one behavior referral for quarter one. So, this emphasizes the fact that majority of our students meet school behavior expectations every single day. So, you'll see how low that percentage drops when we remove, hey, you get that one opportunity, but you make a poor choice, and you learn from it, and, and you may receive some consequences, and then it never happens again with those students. So, that's a super-low number at all three levels for the percentage of students who have actually received the discipline consequence. I think sometimes we get caught up in, it's a ton of students making these poor choices, and certainly, this, this data shows that, that, that's certainly not true. This last behavior slide displays our number of long-term suspensions for quarter one over the last three school years. And as you can see, A1 listed on the screen, which is the possession or use of alcohol or drugs, is the leading cause of our long-term suspensions, and the possession or use of THC vapes account for the vast majority of these incidences. We do have, just as a reminder, the Drug-Free Paulding Program for First-Time Offenders of A1, that provides them with an opportunity to participate in training and learning to reduce. reduce their consequences in order not to make that same poor choice again, and certainly to teach them the dangers of alcohol and drugs. You will see a sharp rise in threats this year that spiked following the unfortunate tragedy that took place at Appalachian High School. That was actually a state and a national, nationwide spike in those number of threats. You saw that on the news. In our district, in response to this rise in threats, we actually teamed with the Sheriff's Office and the Paulding Commissioners Office to create a three-part public safety announcement video series that was entitled "It's No Joke." And that video series went out to all students and parents in our district. And it's not shown here, but I think it's important to say that, just for reference, that our number of threats in our schools dropped back down to four in the month of November, and so far, we've only had two in the month of December. So that is certainly something that's, that I think that video series made a difference. This next slide for Safety and Security shows the number of campus-wide alerts that have been instigated using our Syntejix Crisis Alert System. This system is used on a daily basis by our schools, and as you can see, the vast majority of those alerts were for student behavior that required administrative assistance or for drills, lockdown drills, or severe weather drills. As that button, that's the three-button push that is a designated area within a designated school. So we have had a tremendous amount of positive feedback from all of our schools regarding Syntejix and the support it provides them on a daily basis. And we've only had, thank goodness, one lockdown that was a true lockdown within our school system, and that was actually last school year. And certainly, the system worked in that situation as well, so. This next slide with our Student Supports Department shows the number of social worker activity and referral module, or SWARM referrals, as we call them, that our five social workers have processed during the first quarter of the last three school years. You'll see that the average number of referrals per school for each social worker was 248. So we have five social workers, so those guys are obviously super busy every day. As you can see also on the slide, that our numbers have decreased for 2024, and we certainly attribute that to the wraparound supports that we have worked to put in place for students over the past three years through Ms. Cooksey's leadership and her department. Attendance has the largest number of referrals, however, you'll notice that economic hardships and homelessness are two issues that are becoming more and more prevalent as reasons for referral in our district. Staying with the Student Supports Department, this slide shows Columbia Scales, the number of Columbia Scales that have been completed with our students for the first quarter over the last three school years again. These are self-harm severity assessments that once administered lead to us being able to effectively address the issue that led to the assessment being administered. So after those are administered, next steps may include therapeutic intervention and the implementation of a safety plan with that student. We've seen a pretty significant decrease in the number administered over the past three years in quarter one. And again, we certainly feel like that's due in large part to the increase in coordination of our wraparound services that we have in place for students. So this is always an amazing number to me. This slide is in reference to our School Supports Department and our school nurses. Shows the number of clinic visits logged by our school nurses for the first quarter. As you can see, that's a very large number, and certainly reiterates the importance of having a nurse in every school on a daily basis. I think it's important to note, what's not displayed here is the length of each visit that those visits take. You know, some of those may be quicker with students just stopping by to receive daily medication. However, some of them can be very lengthy, as the nurse evaluates the student based on their symptoms. And also, there are occasions that require nurses to leave their clinic to address issues that have come up in the school, things such as seizures, or slips, trips, and falls, or a student or staff member that's experiencing medical difficulties, and they're not able to physically make it up to the clinic. So our nurses stay super, super busy every day and can have students lined up outside their office and certainly do a great job supporting our students. And then this final slide shows our bus driver vacancy rate for the first quarter over the last three years. Lowering the driver vacancy rate this year has allowed us to establish more routes. We've actually added 21 routes this year, which is incredible. And when you do that, it shortens the amount of time that students have to be on the bus, and it reduces the overall number of students that are required to be on each bus. So our on-time bus arrival was actually 93% in September and October of this year compared to 86% for those same two months in 2023. So I think that certainly, Mr. Studstill and his team, and a number of factors can impact school buses getting to our campuses on time, one of those being driver vacancy, and then, of course, daily driver attendance. There's always a lot of call-ins as far as drivers that are going to miss, and then, of course, any unexpected congestion in road construction that's going on in our county. And I'll just finish by saying, we're certainly very thankful for the local funding initiatives that were approved by this board and were put in place to help us retire, to retain, hire, and retain quality drivers. So that's a little shot of school leadership. Like I said, there's much, much more information in the overall report, and we look forward to answering any questions that you guys may have about that report on the 14th.
Tell you one little fact that I saw in the report that kind of connects the crisis management to the nursing is that in those clicks, the three clicks, there were almost 70, I think it was 69, medical emergencies.
Yes.
And that's how the nurses reacted, that's how a crisis alert was used in those. You always think of security, but that's been a real asset to the schools. And the other thing, just Google it while you were talking, MART is on time percentage? If anybody want to guess, 75%.
There you go.
Or 93%, that's pretty good. Not that MART is really what we're going for, but it's just a metric to look at.
Yeah.
So anyway, yeah.
And I would say too, in speaking about crisis alert, as that is activated in schools each day, team members here at the board only get the activation if it's a lockdown, which, you know, we know something big, but as Mr. Rupel and his team members may come through during the day, that thing, they get all of them, all the three-button pushes for all 34 schools. And you never like to hear that going off, but you can hear it all the way, and you know that our schools are utilizing that, and the teachers are super thankful and supportive of it because it gets the help and support they need there quickly, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Freeman. The report's, of course, to be online. I will actually attach it to the weekly update to the board, and of course, the breakout sessions on the 14th at 4:45, the board can come by and talk about any of these things. Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'll move on to the business items for the evening. And so first up, we have school nutrition. I believe Karen Mathis is here, School Nutrition Director. She's going to share an item that will be, again, all these items will be presented tonight, the board will approve them on the 14th.
Good evening.
Ms. Mathis.
School Nutrition issued a request or proposal for replacement of some cafeteria tables, and we had three responsive and responsible vendors reply, and those are listed on your tab sheet. They were Ernie Morris, Belter, and Schools Inn, and Ernie Morris was the most responsive, responsible, lowest-priced vendor. And so we are asking your approval to spend $140,000, $140,750 to replace some tables. And we do this annually as an ongoing replacement cycle in some of our schools.
The board doesn't have any questions tonight. We've got two weeks, or no more than two weeks this time, to ask all sorts of questions by the 14th, so. So thank you, Ms. Mathis, for being here. Thank you. I'm going to invite Cole Crowder, our Director of Procurement, to come up. He's going to present this first item, will join the school nutrition item on our consent agenda on the 14th. And so you're going to talk to architects, aren't you?
First one, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Good night, or good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have the two items that Mr. Barnett mentioned, and first, we should have, yep, our AIA Architectural Contract with Robertson Loya Roof PC for the renovation modification to South Paulding High School. This contract's for the architectural design for the renovation modification and for the retention of other disciplines to produce construction documents, project oversight, quality control, from the beginning bidding phase through our certificate of occupancy and closeout phases. And this architect fee is 6% of the cost of work, and the current cost of work is estimated to be $11.6 million. Okay. And then our second item that we have tonight is for the AIA Construction Contract with Smith Built Construction Group for the renovation modification to Pool Elementary School. And just a little background on that project, on September 17th, 2024, Smith Built Construction Group was awarded the Request for Proposal 24240619, Construction Management at Risk for the construction and renovation modification project at Pool Elementary School. The renovation will consist of a new HVAC system, an intercom, LED lighting, plumbing and roofing upgrades, flooring replacement, various kitchen equipment, and asphalt repair. The guaranteed maximum price for this contract will be for $6,214,565. And just as a reminder, this GMP, architect fees are contracted separately, and as well as additional costs, including pre-construction furniture, fixtures, equipment, and technology aren't included in our GMP contract. And like Mr. Barnett said, if you have any question on either of those projects, you can send them to us between now and the 14th, and that is where they will be placed on the agenda for approval.
And Cole, you, did you mention that the capital-outlay component of this will be right at 30%? It's like 1.8 million?
Right, 1.7, yeah.
Pretty good. I mean, that's a pretty good percentage for us right now, I think, so that was great. And of course, Doug's here, if anyone has any questions about these projects, they were all in the quarterly report, right?
Yes.
So there you go. But thank you, Mr. Crow, appreciate it.
Thank you.
That last item will be on its own vote on the 14th, it won't be a part of the consent agenda. And Mr. Freeman here is going to step back up for the last item, which is pretty exciting, and so I'll shut up and won't steal your thunder there, so.
That's okay. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Barnett. I'm very excited about this. Tonight, we are presenting an action item, recommendation that will be made during the January 14th Board Work Session. The recommendation we are presenting tonight is to rename the Paulding County High School Auditorium to the Dr. Ronnie Davis Auditorium. Dr. Ronnie Davis served as the Director of Bands at Paulding County High School from 1980 to 1999, and later at Hiram High School from 1999 until his retirement in 2011. He was a devoted educator, whose 31 years of service to the students and families of Paulding County exemplified dedication, passion, and an unwavering commitment to excellence. A graduate of Auburn University, Dr. Davis achieved a remarkable academic career, earning his Doctor of Philosophy in Music Education in 2000. His legacy is deeply felt, as the world is better for having known him, and those fortunate enough to be touched by his work are better people for it. I would also add that I am one of those individuals that was greatly touched and influenced by Ronnie Davis. I had the great fortune of being a student at Paulding County High School when Dr. Davis was the band director there. And then several years later, I was the principal at Hiram High School when Dr. Davis was our band director. So certainly, he had a huge impact, positive impact on my life through leadership and just many, many different ways. The renaming was initiated by a group of individuals interested in honoring Dr. Davis. It was wholeheartedly supported by Principal Andy Dorsey and his administrative staff, and was reviewed by district leadership, who also felt it was a fitting way to memorialize the lasting impact Dr. Davis had on the Paulding County School District. We have followed the guidance in Board Policy FDC naming facilities, and believe naming the auditorium after Dr. Davis would be a fitting tribute to his remarkable legacy. It would serve as a permanent reminder of the transformative power of education and the enduring influence of a life dedicated to service.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. That would again be a vote on the 14th, standalone vote.
I just wanted to mention that I think it's fantastic that they're doing that and just say it publicly that recently, not too recently, when the policy was changed on, when the policy was changed in naming facilities and parts of facilities and things like that, it was, you know, mine, the rest of the board's anticipation that everyone and all the administrators of every school would, you know, understand that with the long history of service our county has, that there'd be plenty of opportunities to name and rename all kind of facilities, fields, auditoriums, and things like that. So I'm personally happy about it and, you know, hopefully expect to see a lot more in the future. I don't know if I could say that strongly enough, it's a...
Was there a reason Paulding was picked over Hiram?
The group that came, there was actually, and there was several, probably 25, 30, and they certainly could have solicited more than this, but band members from Paulding County High School and Hiram High School, but the group that came forward since he began his career at Paulding County High School felt like, and that was where he spent the longest part of his career, even though he ended his career at Hiram High School. And there is, there is a roadway that leads down to the, what used to be the band practice field. The band has since moved the area where they practice in the back because that was more conducive to their equipment and everything, but that we named Dr. Ronnie Davis Way that goes down to the band, the practice field that the band used to practice on at Hiram, so, yeah.
I never had it, but I was at Paulding, and I was director of, I have many friends that were in the band, but he was very well-known and respected.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I'll segue into the action item, if you don't mind. There's only one item tonight, that's approval of personnel. So I do request approval of personnel report presented this evening, which includes items 1 through 59.
Hearing the superintendent's recommendation to approve personnel items 1 through 59, do I have a motion? Got a bunch of them. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, I got a movement by Ms. Lyons, second by Mr. Nolan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right. Do we have any public participation? All right, with no public participation, we will go into board member comments, and Mr. Nolan, you get to go first tonight.
Well, I hope, let me get this on. Hope everybody has a great Christmas holiday and break from school. It's always a good time of the year to recharge the batteries. I know our teachers are going to be looking forward to a much-needed break, so I hope everybody has a safe, happy, and fun holiday, restful holiday, absolutely.
I just wanted, can't say ditto tonight, y'all, sorry. I just wanted to reiterate how excited we are for those four REACH scholarship winners. That is super exciting, and I know their families and they themselves are super excited. I cannot even imagine having to narrow that list down to those four students, but I'm very proud of them and excited for them. Also, the grant winners from the Paulding Education Foundation, that is exciting to see all the activity and the things that are going on in the different schools. And I'm going to say, lastly for me, not lastly in general, but the CCRPI scores, that was great news, glad to hear it. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. In addition to that, I just want to say Merry Christmas. Thank you to everyone, all the administrators, everybody here that contributes so much day-to-day. It's not unnoticed by any means at all. We thank you very much for what you do. I did want to, again, the teachers, administrators in each of the individual schools, well-deserved break coming up in just another week. Enjoy the time off. Again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and we'll see you guys back January 14th. Mr. Ford.
Just want to wish everyone a happy Merry Christmas and safe break, and I know we're looking forward to it as well. And again, as Mrs. Colette said, congratulations to all of our scholarship winners. As you said earlier, I know it's hard for those kids to interview, you know, as an eighth grader, and it's a lot of pressure, and those five should be commended for that out of however many, would you say, seven? out of however many, would you say, seventy-three-hundred middle school students? Wow, so, uh, congratulations to them and, uh, thank you to our staff for the presentations tonight as well. Um, one thing I, I wanted to do and, and maybe Mr. Barnett can give me numbers on this and it's probably far-fetched, but for Mr. Freeman, um, a few months back I had mentioned maybe doing a, like, just a quick study on how much it would cost the district to bring middle school sports back under the direction of the school district versus subbing those out to feeder programs in certain sports, not all sports. Um, I'd still like to see some numbers in the future, there's no rush on it. Um, just wanted to throw that back out there as a reminder. Um, and to see if maybe we have enough, you know, staff power to, to handle that. Um, you know, maybe reach down to our middle school coaches, um, high school coaches and that kind of thing. Um, and then that's all I've got.
Uh, just want to say congratulations again, like everyone has said, to our REACH scholars, that's, uh, amazing. I can't imagine having to go through that process myself to try and get a scholarship in eighth grade. I would have probably just bowed out and said, no, thank you. And I do want to correct myself, I played Oregon Trail on the original, like, real floppy disk, not that hard thing that's on the plaque, so I just wanted to correct myself there. Um, congratulations on the CCRPI improvements, that's a fantastic, you know, like you said, Ms. Fraser, we want success for all of our students, not just certain ones. So it's great to see that all of our categories are in, going in the right direction. Um, thank you to the Paulding Education Foundation for all that you guys do for us. I know you don't get much recognition and y'all do a lot in the background, supporting our teachers and our students, so we just appreciate everything that you do for us. Um, and I beg one as a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Yes, I'd like to add to that, just Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all the staff. Thank you for all the great information, uh, Ms. Fraser, Julie, Paulding, uh, Education Foundation. All you guys are doing a great job. There's, there's no way to actually say thank you so much for what you do. But Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and be safe.
Mr. Chester.
I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone and be safe. Proud of, of, of our community and where we are and to get to this point in the school year. So looking forward to seeing everyone in the new year, thank you.
Well, I just, uh, in the spirit of Christmas, I want to say I hope we all truly remember the reason for the season and that we will all be truly grateful to all that we have. And, uh, uh, and I pray peace that passes all, understanding for all of us, for our staff and our families and our students and, uh, just Happy New Year, we'll see you next year. And hopefully everybody will be refreshed and rested and ready to start back.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the final board meeting for twenty-twenty-four?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Nolan, second by Mr. Clayton, any discussion? All in favor of the adjournment of our last meeting? Is that unanimous? There we go, we are adjourned.